Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for Wednesday, March 6, 2019. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm your Deputy City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, Logan Showalter. The following is a piece of legislation to be discussed by Pittsburgh City Council. Bill Number 1353. Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code by Creating Title 13 Entitled "Storm Water Management" and by Deleting Storm Water Management Text from Title 10 Building Chapter 1003. That concludes the piece of legislation to be discussed. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this cablecast public hearing of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Wednesday, March 6, 2019. I'm Councilman Kraus. I'll chair this afternoon's public hearing. I am joined by my colleague, Councilwoman Deborah Gross. We have an ordinance before us, which is Bill 1353. Our invited guests are Andrew Dash and Kara Smith of our Department of City Planning. And so, to open the meeting, Madam Clerk, may I have the purpose of Bill 1353?
Bill 1353. Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code by Creating Title 13 Entitled "Storm Water Management" and by Deleting Storm Water Management Text from Title 10 Building Chapter 1003.
Hey, thank you, Madam Clerk. So, welcome to our invited guest. Andrew, will you make a brief statement?
I will, yes. So, Andrew Dash, Assistant Director, Department of City Planning. The bill that this hearing is regarding is, you know, an amendment to the city's code to update the storm water management regulations that we have relative to work that was done at the county level relative to Act 167. So, I'm joined by Kara Smith, who is the city's Principal Environmental Planner, and she will give a brief presentation just explaining the purpose of Act 167, what changes that means to our code, and what we're looking to do in the future.
Kara? Hi, I'm Kara Smith. Thanks, Andrew. So, I guess we'll just go through this presentation. Apologies if you can't see this. What is the Pennsylvania Storm Water Management Act 167? It's a management act that was created in 1978, and it stipulated that municipalities within Pennsylvania, counties within Pennsylvania, had to adopt storm water management plans for each watershed in consultation with its municipalities. And it has to be reviewed at least every five years, and so it's been updated from time to time since '78. And the state required an update, and Allegheny County undertook an update recently. And as a part of that, we have to enact an ordinance that meets the minimum requirements in the county's update. Counties also have to submit their plans to DEP for approval. So, that's why we're updating this code right now. The county hired consultant Michael Baker International to lead their process, which they began around 2012. They've had a lengthy public involvement process that we had previous staff members from City Planning and from Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority involved in during that process. The code wa-- the, sorry, the county watershed plan was approved in May of last year, and then DEP approved it. And subsequently, all municipalities within Allegheny County have to adopt plans that correspond with the county plan. And it's also necessary to satisfy the city's MS4 regulatory requirements implemented through the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. So, we have wanted to update our code for some time, and we decided to undertake code updates in two separate phases, primarily dictated by the county's requirement that the code be updated in compliance with Act 167 within a year of adoption. So, we are technically at that time already. And so, this first phase of code update is happening per requirements. It's the minimum requirements spelled out in the county's watershed plan. And the county's watershed plan was primarily designed for rural and suburban land uses, which much of the county is. However, we realize that in the city, we have different situation, more urban, and so we are going to be working with PWSA to undertake a second code update phase. And with that, we'll be doing greater analysis, more Pittsburgh-specific, more detailed, more public engagement, and that will be coming up next. But this first phase of the code update for Act 167 specifically, we've worked interdepartmentally with Permits, Licensing, and Inspections, and PWSA, and our legal staff. This update provides greater clarity on the requirements than our existing code, and some of the most important changes from the code update are that the first one inch of storm water for privately funded projects has to be managed via green infrastructure, unless the applicant can prove technical infeasibility. That's separate from publicly funded projects, which already have the requirement for the first inch and a half to be managed via green infrastructure. And the other big change is that no development is permitted within a 35-foot stream buffer. So, that's not rivers, this is streams only, and primarily here, that is for Sawmill Run. We didn't adopt, at this time, any stricter requirements beyond what is required for Act 167, given that we're going to be taking a more detailed approach and update coming up. Where the city code was already stricter than the county requirements, such as for the threshold limits for triggering a storm water management plan review, we left those stricter requirements. So, we pulled existing storm water management code out of Title 9 and Title 10, sorry, Title 10, the building code, and put it into a new title, Title 13. And we merged the Act 167, the county's model ordinance, with some of our old text. So, it's all in Title 13 now, mostly. There is some relevant text left in the zoning code, as it applies to the thresholds required for storm water management plan review, but we're going to take a look at that again in Phase 2. And right now, there's no changes being made to the actual review process itself. To talk a little bit about Phase 2, to give you an idea of what's coming up, this is what we've preliminarily discussed with PWSA, as some of our bigger goals. We're looking at other cities with similar geographies to Pittsburgh. So, yes, Philly, although Philly is also bigger, has and has different physical constraints than Pittsburgh does. We're also looking at some other cities and make sure that we are up to standards of best practice in storm water management. So, some of the goals that we are looking at are, of course, better public and stakeholder engagement, making sure that the development community is actively engaged in the process, and watershed groups, and the public in general. We're going to ensure that our development requirements are in conformance with PWSA's existing Green First Plan to reduce flooding and reduce combined sewer overflow, improve water quality, and we're going to look at bumping up the amount of storm water management, the amount of storm water managed to the first inch and a half of storm events. That's what PWSA's current project standards are that they use. So, we'll be looking at doing that for both public and private. We are looking at reducing peak flow rates. That'll occur after some more in-depth engineering analysis. We want to better define what green infrastructure is and our alternate compliance policies for when green infrastructure, you can't use it to manage all the storm water on-site. And we also want to make sure that this code update will mesh well with all of our other city codes and plans. Thank you.
Just to close, you know, the code amendment that is before you right now is the Phase 1, that Act 167 work. The Phase 2 will be things that will be coming to City Council to later in the year relative to. And, you know, the administration of the code, although it is currently in the building code, permits licenses and inspections does not, they do not administer that section of the code, and it is administered by the Department of City, by our department, by the Department of City Planning. And so, with that, that was part of the reason that knowing that the future phase will be looking to, you know, for its, we're moving all of that into a separate title now as, yes, because although, like I said, although it is in the building code presently, that is not something that PLI currently administers.
Can I see your hard copy, so I don't have to go back there?
Are we going to allow some questions now, or are we going to go through the public hearing?
Yeah, we're going to take a public hearing first, okay, and then, because I'm going to be respectful of their time. Yes, okay. All right, thank you. All right, so, that'll conclude our presentation for this moment in time. There will be some questions and answers by members of council, but first, we want to be mindful of our invited guests that will be coming here to speak today. So, we will go into our list of registered speakers. I would like to remind everyone that each speaker will have three minutes in which to address council. We ask that when you come up, you please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, then you'll relinquish the podium. So, our first registered speaker to this afternoon is John Steffen, and John, please come up. You will be followed by Yvonne Francine Brown. Welcome, John.
Good afternoon. My name is John Stephen, resident of Aspenwall, neighbors to your water source. But I am here this afternoon speaking as Director of the Negli Run Watershed Task Force, which is an inter-agency and interdisciplinary task force looking at the rain-water issues in the East End, and with much involvement from the communities of Negli Run, including Homewood, La Rmer, Point Breeze, who one resident will be here after me. But I come speaking in favor of this ordinance. It is a great start, but it really is only just that, it's a start. I urge you to make sure you move rapidly into Phase 2 and start to address some of the very important issues around our storm water flows. I want to remind you that water policy is land use policy, and land use policy is water policy. So, that really is important, that you find ways of tightening up the integration of the zoning code with these storm water requirements. For instance, you know, we mentioned, the Green First Plan was mentioned, which in Negli Run is a priority watershed. Green First Plan is a couple of years old, but already, there's been a lot of investments in those East End communities, and it's starting to be, development is occurring on some of those sites that were identified as GI or storm water retention opportunities zones. There has to be a better integration or enforcement of the Green First Plan and the storm water watershed plans that are developed through Phase 2 and beyond. And another thing is that enforcement and implementation will require money and commitment, and the city needs to find a way to make sure that this program is funded going forward. So, as we start thinking about or talking about storm water fees and an MOU with PWSA, make sure that there's a way to capture some of that revenue, so that the city has the staff and the expertise to respond to these development plans, and that exemptions to the requirements are given out sparingly or, you know, only under the extreme circumstances, because we all have to work together with a good long-term vision for managing storm water within the urban environment in order to make sure we avoid the tragedies which set the Negli Run watershed and the property damage that occurs every year as our storms get worse and worse. Thank you very much.
All right, John, thank you. Thanks for being here. Okay, Ms. Brown, you're next.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District, and I would like to say to you that are here, that any time I see that there's a hearing, if I can possibly come, and the main thing I ask is, does the community know? There's been times that the community did not know. Now, it seems like you do, and especially the fellow that spoke before me, he knows what he's talking about. He belongs to a group that have been studying. See, some of the problems with this city is that the people don't know what you're doing. A lot of times, they don't watch City Council. Then you know how late things start. They're supposed to start at 10:00. Sometime, they start, they used to do 10:29, so, I used to, they should do 10:30, 10:35, and they're supposed to cancel it, and I would scream, and then they started, well, 10:29, 10:28. That's a whole half an hour that we sit. I asked whenever they have us waiting, why couldn't we, as residents, take up that time? Why couldn't we make suggestions? Now, Mr. Kraus, I want you to know about him, is that when we had, they made an announcement, they said Ms. Harris should be, come on, please, please. I'm not doing anything but looking to the side, and I still got time.
Ms. Brown, I'm not going to argue with you. Ms. Brown, I am not going to argue with you.
What am I doing wrong?
I'm asking you to please address the council.
See, now, you know what? Tim Stevens was last week, Tim Stevens, he turned all the way around. Yes, he did, okay. I'm addressing you because he says I must, but he will not help Tim Stevens because he's yellow. You know, I'm dark. Even dark people, he gives us a hard time. Even Esther Bush, he would not let her speak. They would not let her continue, and then the government sent $1 million for Esther Bush to work with this city. Do you understand? He's making decisions and treating me just like I'm nothing. I turned, because I turned my head, come on now, Tim Stevens turned all the way around. You did not say one thing, kept turning around. Do you understand? I am coming down here, I am trying to help the citizens, I am fighting for our community. I'm not doing anything wrong if I turn my head to the left or right. Do you see? You have the man from Passer Hollow, he had a sign that said that UPMC was raping Passer Hollow. You know what he said? You cannot say, cannot, and I said, come on, saying, you're going to take this man's right away. He needed letters, he let him say it. He let him say it only because I spoke up then. When I'm speaking up, when I'm fussing, this is the time that the law says I must. It's not me. It says, if they're doing something wrong, you must speak right then. When I complained about, I was a sponsor, he made me just a person with three minutes. When my three minutes are said, the man my two minutes, and he put me out with his Gestapo tachy.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brown. I would just like to take a moment, I, thank you, Ms. Brown. Just like to take a moment as the Chair of the meeting, thank you, Ms. Brown, to remind everyone that the purpose of the public hearing is to speak on the legislation before us.
I'm going, I'm going, I'm going, I'm going, I'm going. He's wrong, and you know it.
Thank you.
And he knows it.
All right. All right, thank you, Ms. Brown. So, I just, so, I just want to take the moment to remind everyone that the purpose of the public hearing, a public hearing, is to come in, to speak about the legislation that is before us, and that the purpose is to educate and edificate the council with your remarks, not to come in and to address the audience here about topics that are not before the council. Having said that, may we have our next registered speaker, which is Erin Copeland. Okay, welcome, Ms. Copeland.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thanks very much. My name's Erin Copeland. I live in Highland Park here in the city, and, but I also work for the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, and so, I wanted to come here to voice my support of the city amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title 13, Storm Water Management. It allows the city to conform to Act 167, the plan and the model ordinance, excuse me, and it's valuable because it will improve effective storm water management at watershed and site-specific scales, and also improve the overall quality of water, of receiving water bodies. It's necessary and so important to have a comprehensive vision that integrates land management and storm water management policies across the city and county. By doing so, development which interrupts the water cycle can be directed to reintegrate that water into the landscape. This water, this will keep the water healthier and our city greener. At the Parks Conservancy, we are advocating for and collaborating on built green infrastructure in the parks, and we do this because storm water management techniques improve the water's health, and if done collaboratively, can bring much-needed investment opportunities to restore parklands. This improves the land itself, as well as those communities around the parks. This legislation is just a first step towards implementing GI, or green infrastructure, in a systemic way across the city of Pittsburgh and within the parks. Working closely with PWSA and their citywide Green First Plan will reduce storm water runoff, flooding, basement backups, and improve public lands. On many park sites across the city, Shenley is part of Four Mile, Whitman, Riverview is part of Woods Run, Highland is part of Negli Run, there are ongoing PWSA and City of Pittsburgh projects. Supporting and building these is again needed as part of the solution to curbing CSOs. We at the Parks Conservancy acknowledge and appreciate the leadership of the City of Pittsburgh and City Council, and we look forward to continued partnership on park and green storm water infrastructure policies, projects, and programs. Our sincerest thanks for your continued work on improving storm water legislation in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thanks, Jen. Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Donnell Pearl. Oh, you're here? Good, welcome. Hi, Mr. Pearl. Thanks for being here.
So, my name is Donnell Pearl. I'm a local Homewood resident. I work for Pitt, Pitt's Community Engagement Center, and as a homeowner in Homewood, I'd like to see and voice my support for green infrastructure. Pittsburgh speaks outwardly about being among the most innovative cities in the nation, the most green and progressive. Here in dealing with the watershed sewer overflow problem, we have an opportunity to look back to some old methods, and green infrastructure really does serve a dual purpose. It beautifies, beautifies the neighborhood and slows down the velocity of water flowing into our sewers. The city will be reducing the sewer overflow, and that increases the quality of our local rivers. It's been shown that a local, in a local project, that a tree pit can absorb and retain up to 675 gallons of water. Just one tract of linear tree pit can do that, and I do urge you to go beyond, to go beyond your first step in supporting the PWSA's Negli Run watershed project. I want you guys to do more green infrastructure in my neighborhood as part of development and incorporate that into development plans, and I yield the rest of my time.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Pearl. Thanks for being here. Dorothea Hall. Ms. Hall, are you here? Okay. Stephanie Walsh is not here, but Vivian, did I say that correctly? Vivian Schaefer. Hi, Ms. Schaefer, welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us here this afternoon. My name is Vivian Schaefer. I'm a resident of North Point Breeze, Point Breeze just north, and I am a resident of two watersheds. The water that falls on our gardens and drains through flows to the Negli Run watershed, and the water that we flush down our sewage system is piped into Nine Mile Run. I've been serving as the Point Breeze North Neighborhood Development Committee's representative to the Negli Run Task Force for some time, and as of a day and a half ago, I am the newly elected board member of PBNDC. In discussing storm water management at our community meeting on Monday, and also with my neighbors, I've found that we have consensus on a number of areas relating to storm water management. Everybody wants to solve the combined sewer overflow problem. Nobody signed up for sewage in their basement. Everybody wants to solve the problems of flooding, and everybody wants to solve landslide problems, safeguarding our hillsides. We also had consensus around the idea that each neighborhood, just as each watershed, has its own specific management issues, and we would like each neighborhood to have input to the development of the city's plan. PBNDC did not learn of this hearing early enough to develop a formal statement of support for various issues of the plan, but we would like to do so. When we gather together again to draft our statement, we'll be meeting in the building built directly over George Westinghouse's laboratory. He was an innovative thinker who didn't settle for the status quo, who would not have allowed a storm water management system that has caused people to lose their homes and lose their lives. And as the city prepares to celebrate Inclusive Innovation Summit later this month, we hope that George Westinghouse's innovative thinking will inspire your work as well as our statement. Another innovative Pittsburgh thinker, Rachel Carson, reminded us in her book, Silent Spring, in 1964, that the control of nature is a phrase conceived in arrogance born of the Neanderthal age of biology and philosophy, when it was supposed that nature exists for the convenience of man. We have an opportunity through the implementation of green infrastructure and technology to make nature our ally, to work on the same team. Thank you very much.
Oh, what a pleasure to have you here today, Ms. Schaefer. Thank you very much. And there will be ample opportunity to continue to engage as this goes through the council. We'll invite you to come in for public comment and to keep us abreast, and please share your statements and your concerns with us.
To whom should we address our statement? How should we submit that?
To the clerk would be just perfect, and she will then distribute it to all members.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Pleasure having you. Now, we have exhausted our list of registered speakers, but I know we have several other speakers in the audience that wish to address council, so you're welcome to come up one at a time. Please start by giving us your name and the neighborhood in which you reside, and you'll have your three minutes to speak to the council. Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm Helen Beizers. I'm representing the Pennsylvania Interfaith Impact Network in 1620 Murray Avenue in Squirrel Hill. We sit at the Our Water, Our Rivers table with John Stevens, and I just want to reiterate what he said, is that it's really important that the green infrastructure opportunities that the PWSA has already identified need to be protected by the City Planning Department, by the zoning department. There does need to be coordination, and if there needs to be additional funds spent, that could be from the new storm water fee. So, I also want to say that Walnut Capital, when they gave us a tour of the Google facility, said that really intense storm water management is what a progressive developer expects to have to comply with, and that if they have progressive clients, that they expect that this will be a requirement. So, make it tough.
Okay, thanks, Helen. Thank you for being here. Okay, may we have our next speaker, please? Yep. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name's Maureen Copeland. I reside in East Liberty. I'm also here on behalf of the Nine Mile Run Watershed Association. So, I just want to thank you, City Planning, for, you know, all the work that you've done so far. I really appreciate the two-phase recognizing that we have to come in I really appreciate the two-phase recognizing that we have to come into compliance with Act 167, but also having the, you know, foresight to kind of move that requirement to the next level in order to protect our water quality and our communities. Nine Mile Run is very much in favor of green stormwater infrastructure for all the many benefits it has to the community, not just in water quality. So we're excited and very much invested in this topic, and want to see what the community input sessions coming forward are. And yes, again, thank you for all the work you put into this so far, and look forward to seeing what comes of it next.
Maureen, thank you very much. Okay, I think we have one more speaker. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Brenda Smith. I reside in Squirrel Hill, and I'm the Director of the Nine Mile Run Watershed Association, and also a board member at Alcasan. So I'm, think a lot about the big picture of how we're going to solve the sewer overflow problem and come into compliance with the consent decree, and I'm, you know, very much in favor of PWSA's Green First Plan. However, for it to have any chance of succeeding and for us to be able to spend a billion dollars above ground instead of underground in a tunnel system, it's critical to get the private sector involved, because we can't build enough on public, in the public right-of-way, to be able to capture enough stormwater to come into compliance. So any kind, whether it's the stormwater fee or a more stringent ordinance, stormwater ordinance, those things will help make sure that the private sector begins to play a bigger role in keeping stormwater out of the sewers, and I think that's really critical. So I'm very much in favor of adopting the currently proposed ordinance and then of the public process to see if we can make it even better. I think it's also great to work jointly with PWSA in the public process. However, I don't think it's necessary for the city to wait until PWSA is actually implementing their fee in order to adopt a stronger ordinance, because now that PWSA is under PUC oversight, it could be a protracted process. So it's good to work together, you know, reaching out to the public, but if you can move along on a faster timetable, that would be great. Also, I just wanted to note that in looking at the ordinance in the section about technical infeasibility, there's a heavy emphasis on infiltration, but I always just like to note that it is possible to do effective green stormwater infrastructure without infiltrating water into the ground, because there are, of course, many places in the city where it wouldn't be a good idea to do that. But you can build something that's lined and that functions beautifully and provides the other benefits that we want from green infrastructure without actually infiltrating the water. So I think that's about it. I just, we look forward to participating in the process, and thank you for doing this.
Brenda, thank you. So I think that exhausts everyone that wished, nope, come down, ma'am, please. You're welcome to have your three minutes.
It won't take that long.
It's okay, thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Bruce. My name is Claudia Kirkpatrick. I'm one of your constituents.
Oh, thank you.
And I'm here on behalf of the local Allegheny group of the Sierra Club, and I live up on the top of, what's the hill called?
Oops.
No. Up, up what used to be called Swinburne or Swineburne.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
There.
I was there last night.
Which is a little busy with trees coming down. The, I want to, I brought you something that I know you've seen.
Oh, my. Oh, thank you.
It's a picture of Lower Greenfield flooded, down in the Run. And, and I just want to say that the, that the plan that the, has been put together is very careful and very thorough and not going to be easy, and, and we're very supportive of it, and that's all.
Thanks, Claudia. I was on Swineburne last night, and I just want to assure you that we met with the, or Director of DOME, and we are going to correct that hillside and eventually get those stop signs out of there.
Behind my house, day before yesterday, there was a large truck taking down trees from Joey Bell's area, over, so that that hill is right down behind us. So they were taking down trees so that they wouldn't fall down.
I promise you, we are on it. Have you been down Swineburne? It's the hillside, it's collapsing, and it's really difficult to correct them. We've actually had to put stop signs in a, in the middle of the street, just two stop signs, because it has to narrow down to one to get through. Anyway, okay, so that exhausts our list of registered speakers. Thank you all for coming out today to address the council. I'd like to apologize for getting a little heated there later. Probably not one of my best moments. I don't want you to think that's necessarily what I'm like. So with that, Councilwoman, I'd like to turn the floor to you. I know you have a series of questions that you'd like to propose, and so I'd like to turn the table over to you.
Thank you. I mean, I think we'll save, you know, more thoughts for our later process as we move forward in Phase Two. I just wanted to emphasize what I heard, and I think some of the speakers emphasized as well, which is that in the planning department presentation, you emphasized that we've taken and added in the required language from Act 47, from the Allegheny County, Act 47D, you know, approved plan, state-approved plan, but we haven't reduced any of our own criteria. So we've added them together, and I just wanted to make sure that we repeat that one more time. So we kind of moved our code, which in some places is higher standards than the Act 167, county-adopted language, and we've combined them together, and thank you, I'm sure it was very difficult to do, to weave them together into a new chapter and code, which is now Chapter 13, so people can look it up and see it, but that in no, that in no respects were any of our own standards reduced. And that's where we are currently, right? So we have new county language, and we have our current standards, and they were not reduced. But what we are looking forward, and what I heard from public testimony today, is that we can still do more. And so we're going to have this opportunity in Phase Two, and we know we need more, and we heard very clearly today, thank you to all the speakers, basements flooding, streets flooding, properties flooding, combined sewer overflow, landslides are all impacted by water flow, right? Both watersheds and sewer sheds. And so this is the place, this new Chapter 13, is where we will have the opportunity to talk about creating standards where we can reduce that flooding, reduce landslide risk, and reduce the combined sewer overflow. So I just wanted to say we are all looking forward to that discussion. I also often refer to the Citywide Green First Plan, because as I've, you've heard me say before here at this table, we know that not every square foot of the city combines equally to the combined sewer overflow, and that very careful study by PWSA and the Mayor's Office some years ago that was adopted by council shows that 20% of the sewer sheds are creating 80% of the outfall that the EPA is so concerned about, and that we're all so concerned about. And I represent the A-22, where I believe one-tenth of an inch of rainfall results in overflow, overflow into the Allegheny, and also the A-41, and even partly the A-42, which has been deadly in the past. So, and to one of the speakers' points, in the A-41, we kind of drilled down even more carefully at PWSA and looked at really every kind of square foot, and it goes from, it's what you think of as a zoo parking lot, and the sinks and toilets that are hooked up to that main pipe are, go up to Morningside and over the lip a little bit to Stanton Heights, a lot of Highland Park, and then even part of the back of Garfield, and a little bit of East Liberty. And even with that giant section of City Park down there, and all those wooded hillsides, a lot of public property, certainly a lot of public right-of-way, you still can't capture all that rain. You still need about, it's only about 70% of the capture can occur on public property. So about 30% of the capture will have to occur on private property. And so how do we move forward with that? This will also be the chapter where we can figure that kind of stuff out. Did I say all that? Did I hear that correctly? Okay, so I'm really looking forward. But this is going to be hard work, but it's good work. It's important work, and I feel like we've moved a lot of things into place to get to this moment to have this conversation. So thank you, everybody, for their work.
Yeah, thank you.
But then the community organizations as well, who have really helped us in this conversation.
That's great. I don't know that I could say it better, other than to thank you for being here today, understanding the importance of our responsibility to manage storm overflow. We've seen the devastation that it can cost, cause, and it is our duty and our responsibility to put forward sound policy to which we can manage and mitigate. I'd be happy to turn the floor over to you if you have any further comments that you wish to make. Councilwoman, is this under your committee, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Correct? So is there a timeline in which you wish to see this come back to the, to the council for discussion?
I'll be following up with the Department's City Planning and with colleagues at PWSA, because it's going to be NPLI, obviously, which is also in my committee, because it's going to be, it's going to be a big conversation, and we certainly have lots of community input to be, to be had to as well.
So I want everyone that came today to participate to understand there will be a process. It may take a little bit of time. This is nothing that we're going to rush through. We want to do it right. But stay with us. The Councilwoman will keep you informed, and we'll do our best to make it a cohesive and organized process.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you.
Good, thanks. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn our public hearing?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. We're done.